Get started, we'll call this meeting to order, the Lakefront Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 26. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call.
Roll call Chair Petasky.
Here.
Vice Chair Hammond, Secretary Stansberry.
Here.
Commissioner Bobbs. Commissioner Hicks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Tim Riley.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you.
Let's make a motion to approve, to excuse James and Hammond and Will Fobbs.
Okay, those in favor? I oppose. So, let the record show that both Will and Jason are excused from the meeting today. We'll see if Will shows later. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Entertain any comments or not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as a threat.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
So, hey, those in favor? I oppose. Hearing none. And that is approved. But we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 17, 2022. There are no objections or any corrections to be noted. We will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as they're written.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for me.
Those in favor? I oppose. Hearing none. The minutes are approved. So we'll move on to the public comment session or section. If there are any items that the public would like to present or discuss or bring to the commission that are not part of the agenda tonight, we'll entertain that at this time. Anything coming up online, Suzie? Okay, we'll just close that and move on to old business and tabled items or actually, I don't believe there are any old business or tabled items that we're covering tonight. So, we'll move on to new business. And first on the list is the final site plan approval for 2777 Southfield Road, the Panera Bread Development.
So, this is definitely not the first time you've seen this, we've been talking about this topic for couple of meetings now. They have, they have appeared before city council, we are working with Panera and Serna Company on the draft development agreement. Back and forth with some comments, and so we're still finalizing some of those details I drafted and provided to you in your packet for this evening. But now, today, we are here to consider and approve their final site plan approval. So, I will let Eric take it away with the comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster Village Planning Consultant. And in your packet, you'll see the review letter that we most recently completed dated July 22nd with some remaining comments after that last review was complete. The summary of review is where I'd like to focus your attention. That being the building composition and elements, you just like verification that if there's any rooftop mechanical equipment that that would be adequately screened for the ordinance requirements. Some development with the parking requirements, the proposed facility is 10 spaces short, they require 50 and are able to provide 40 spaces on site. So, there was a lease agreement that was submitted and reviewed that provided for the remaining spaces. Which is a property just to the north of Sunset. And the site plan does indicate that there is a loading area, however, it's within one of the drive aisles for the for the drive through, and so there's concern that that would obstruct some of the drive through access if there was delivery or loading taking place during business hours. Some of the functional elements. The applicant was asked to pay some attention to the dumpster and the screening because it does face the residential neighborhood on the El Dorado side of the property. So, we just wanted to ensure that there's adequate landscaping and screening so that that's not a nuisance in close proximity to the residential neighborhood to the west. And that relates to landscaping, just want to make sure that there's proper irrigation for what's being proposed for landscape improvements. And then, last but certainly not least, street furnishings that are required for the ordinance and within the purview of the planned unit development that's being sought and sought for approval. And with that, that concludes the summary, and there's, if there's any questions, you'd be happy to answer. Any questions you might have.
We do have representatives from both Panera and Serna Company hearing.
Okay. So, if there's any question from the commission, I've prepared some notes and things myself, but we'll open it up for the commission if they have any questions regarding, starting at first, I guess, the summary review and the comments from Giffords Webster. Let's see if there's anything that the commission has to add on.
It seems like, seems like the biggest thing left in the, you know, the notes and the letter was really the loading pad. And what happens if, you know, there's a truck in there during, during business hours, so I don't know how we, how that'll be mitigated, that's an issue.
Yeah, and, and I'll just, yeah, adding on to that myself, I'll comment on, is there a particular delivery schedule or arrangement that those trucks come at a time that it's not prime business, I would assume they're not coming during your busy morning or busy evening rush. But, but some, some form of confirmation on that, that, or, or some explanation of how this site is different than maybe your other sites, and is this, is this even something that Panera considers a hardship?
Here. Public comment, same engineer, so.
Yeah, so, in response to the we just confirmed that 85% of our pressure deliveries, which are the vast majority of deliveries, happen overnight. The other thing is that the loading zone is only impeding on the bypass line, which does not contribute to either the key lane for the dual drive through area, and it's also decided so that it doesn't really impede the traffic flow around the site because we still do have those three remaining entrances that users can kind of navigate around the site without going through that bypass.
So, when we say overnight, is that? What, what hours are we talking about?
That, I would have to get confirmation from.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting is that after what Lether would consider what the normal business hours, in other words, is it after 11:00, is it going to be at a time where noise or this is going to create any concerns for the community?
Sure, yeah, I understand your concern there.
Yeah, he wants to talk.
Sure. If you want to.
Sure, hi, everybody, this is Todd, architect, working with Panera, I would be there if it wasn't for bad rainstorms and canceled flights, so apologize for being remote.
Understand the flight these days.
It's a nightmare, but anyway, it is what it is, that's why we have this technology, but no, with all my experience with Panera over the last, you know, nine years. When they say after hours, 85%, they mean after hours, they, they don't do it when customers are in the cafe. So, it would be, you know, a time that the facility is closed for customers would be the majority of the time that those come in, and then the, the other 15, they're very diligent in that, you know, they want to make sure they maximize the ability for their customers to get in the facility, in, in the building, so they work to get that delivered during hours that are, that are low peak time, not peak time. So, they have a really great distribution system, and they do a pretty good job of making sure they're not interrupting folks getting inside. If that answers your question.
I think, I think it does.
Media clarification, with a new building, would your delivery times change any bit, any amount significantly different than the way it's done now?
I wouldn't think so, no, no.
I mean, if you're getting deliveries now at 3:00 in the morning or 11:00 or whatever.
Right.
Having a drive through doesn't change the times, or does it change the times that you would expect deliveries to occur?
I wouldn't think so at all.
Exactly. Well, there's no difference to the impact to the community.
Exactly.
Okay. And then there was the question from Giffords Webster about the adequacy of the dumpster screening, now I was going to go back and check to see what level of information had been provided.
I believe on the civil site plan, there's a height indication as well as the material that's made for trash enclosure. And I want to say that it was about eight feet tall, definitely adequate to cover the size of the enclosures that are, are the dumpsters that are in there. It's further landscaped per the landscape plan.
Okay.
And then Todd has anything else to add?
Have a page reference for that by chance?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that. Question. Sorry.
We were talking about the dumpster enclosure.
The dumpster enclosure and the amount of the information regarding the, the description and whether basically Gifford Webster presenting to us whether the, the commission want to discuss whether it's perceived to be adequate.
Okay, I could speak a little to that, that's okay, this is an appropriate time. So, it is eight feet tall, which is called out in the civil plan, and I just noticed as I'm looking at the civil plan, we didn't call them tiered out, but, you know, when we submit for building review, you'll be, you know, seeing full elevations, it's going to be a stone product that resembles the building itself, so, you know, this will be a decorative enclosure that's tall enough to, you know, block all the trash, and then to Jenna's point as well, we have additional landscaping that you can see on the landscaping plan that surrounds it as well, so I would be amazed unless the doors in front, which are typically a composite, like you've heard of Trex material, I can't believe it's not wood, wood, that typically makes up the slatted gates on the front, so unless those gates are open, I don't think anybody in the community is going to be able to see that trash. Unless they're extreme.
No, I didn't see it as part of the review, but I'll ask the question since it was something that occurred to me, and that's as far as the adequacy for sanitation trucks to get access to that onto the site without undue disruption to Sunset, so I assume the entrance is going to be made in that fashion from, from the, from Sunset Boulevard and then have to turn and negotiate and come around to to access the dumpsters.
We do have our traffic engineer, I think, I think he muted himself, Matt, I don't, I don't know, Matt, if you could speak to the access from a dumpsters point of view, and then we also have the civil engineer, but I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yes, absolutely, and again, Matt Sekler from Stonefield Engineering, we actually had prepared a internal exhibit of a trash truck, a front-loading trash truck that would enter via Southfield and then exit via Sunset. It basically would pull through the main front aisle, work its way to the rear corner where the dumpster is, do a front load pickup, and then do a slight backup to be able to exit onto Southfield. That would basically be the, the front, sorry.
As I say, the intent is off of Southfield Road, which it just looks like a tight 90-degree turn there, so I was, yeah, my presumption was it was going to be off of Sunset. But I would just want to make sure that you, we don't have a situation where they have to drive over, or your landscape is at risk because it's too tight.
No, they would not drive over the landscape, you know, they do swing into, you know, they use all, you know, some of the 22-feet-wide drive aisle on their entrance when they come into the site, but again, much like their other operations, Panera ensures that, you know, refuse pickup is not done during the peak hours on the roadway, so vehicle can make that turn in that kind of 90-degree or 180-degree fashion.
Okay, and, and we've had discussions on other projects before, other proposed developments about the timing of that, so noise is kept to a minimum, it's not disrupted to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, so we want to make sure that it's in compliance with that. Recognizing that, that it's going to be dependent on, or it sounds like the path is dependent upon parking spaces not being filled for the vehicle to navigate.
Well, what would be the time schedule for them?
Would you mind helping out? Helping out the
Record paper?
Yeah.
I you heard. But I maybe
Wouldn't be any different than what it is today, though, would it?
Well, it might be more frequent, it might be, I don't know, I mean, could we get a a time, a likely time, or a range of times? And I can see that being something that a neighbor would say, you know, they're picking up the garbage at 5:00 in the morning, and it's a big noisy truck slamming down dumpsters.
Yeah, well, that's, that, that's a violation of the ordinance, the ordinance, the ordinance is 7:00, 7:00, I believe it's somebody who lives next to a dumpster.
Yeah.
And has dealt with this in the past, I think it starts at 7:00, 7:00 in the morning, and I think it goes through 9:00 tonight, I Right.
We can confirm the actual time, but I think it kind of comes to the same, you know, just thinking about it, kind of the same point as the, as the deliveries. It's not going to change from what it is now, and it's been there for 25 years, and we haven't heard any complaints, but I, I still think that it would be proven to actually get you the specific times, and we can do that vault if the planning commission would like us to.
And, and I understand because contracts change, different companies, they have different practice, practices, different routes. We're just, yeah, concerned about making sure things stay within the ordinances as they're written, so that there are no, no objections inside. This, this is a site that obviously has not been occupied for a while, and now it's going to have more vibrant activity occurring. So, so that'll be a change, there'll be an adjustment period, but.
Absolutely, that's. Well, as a PUD project, we need to identify, and I have this knowledge, I don't know, I'm just asking, is that as an ordinance, does it cover what we're doing in a PUD, or do we need to specify that specifically in the PUD documentation that sanitation garbage will not be picked up between?
Scott, we'd like to comment on that for us.
Yeah, so I, we do have a, excuse me, we do have a reference in the PUD agreement that requires both, not only the applicant and the property owner remain compliant with all city ordinances as well, and zoning ordinances, so that would be inclusive. There is also, we did include some specifics, the daily trash pickup on the lot that, that is a frequent condition that planning commission places on these types of, these types of projects, so there are certain ones that we can, we can certainly add to that and include the dumpster times and the removal of the trash to that list of of highlighted ordinances that they're there to comply with.
Yeah, along with noise and other smell, other noise-related potential sources. See. Um, with regard to the and maybe the civil engineer can, can, can comment on that, with regard to the site plan and the property line along El Dorado Place, is there? I'm trying to understand the relationship of how much is being developed and how much is going to be changed at that location, if I recall correctly, there's a bit of a retaining wall or screening that, that is in place, and wasn't exactly clear on if that, the relationships of the grades there are changing in any manner, or any, you know.
We're not encroaching, we're not encroaching any further west than what is currently happening on site today.
Okay, so the landscaping that's in place currently to the west of the property line is, is, is going to remain intact or, or be restored if it's somehow disrupted by any development that occurs?
There is no proposed changes called out on our plans right now to the west, any further west than our westernmost property line, everything is contained within the site.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I think one of the clarifying things from the last meeting perhaps was just the planning commission's discussion about any additional landscaping essentially to screen, the screen of the dumpster enclosure, and I think that's kind of one of the one of the issues that we're trying to get at and to determine whether or not the commission believes that, that particular site giving it, given its sensitivity towards the single-family residential across the street that the landscaping, the street trees, the shrubs in that location are adequate or sufficient to essentially screen the screen of the dumpster.
Okay, in other words, because of the, the size of the monumentality, if you will, of the enclosure, and whether it's in addition to the fact that it's required, but that it's softened from a standpoint of the adjacent, so I guess that would take a closer look at what the landscaping, the landscape plants are proposed there.
One less honey locust is the tree, and there's spirea at the ground. And Emerald Spreader U.
So.
It's really just a tree that provides, and my you know, beyond the height.
One too far.
Page 44, no packet.
So, do we have, we have that one large tree, do we? This little box, it looks like.
Yes.
Spirea 24, so the 24, 24-inch height, is that a proposed? I mean, is that a max, or is that?
Help myself, I'm sitting back, inviting the answer.
Okay.
The landscape, it appears that the landscaping, and this was something the planning commission, you all talked about this, I think at the first meeting, just the proximity and the placement of that dumpster in the screen as you come up.
As you approach it from, like, or see it from the sidewalk.
We know that the enclosure will be per the ordinance, and this was just something additional that you talked about, and it looks like the screening that's proposed around the dumpster is the same screen in the spirea and the U's that are around, but I think it's that ground sign that's still in the stream, not related at the corner, I think this is the same as that, which would lead me to think that it's lower. And so if that, you know, it is landscaped, and that may be sufficient, but that would be the opportunity if you wanted to think about what that might look like.
Yeah. And I guess in my mind, something that softened and was softened and green and was taller might be something that's more beneficial or more desirable. Which, it's a fairly small item, I don't think it's on the showstopper, I think, but it would certainly, I think, improve the appearance of it just from, instead of there being the mass of masonry.
I think something taller would definitely be a lot more attractive and a lot more in line with those benefits that we are, you know, those above and beyond sort of activities that we're looking for for the PD. Patrick, would you mind jumping in and clarifying if those heights listed, the 24 especially, if those are mature plant heights, or if that's something that would just be installed at that height and grow to something taller?
I believe that's the install height, I can't speak to what it would grow to over time, it would be something we could check if the landscape architect would design a plan about what, what a mature height might be.
Yeah, and
Planting schedule, these are just minimum sizes that are called out.
No, we understand that, but it looks like they're the same ones that are proposed around the sign.
Yeah, it says.
So, it seems like those would be the lower, you'd want to have those lower, obviously, if you're, but we'll talk about that sign in a minute.
The Japanese spirea, it says three feet H T at M A T, which I would assume is three foot.
Maturity.
At maturity. Yeah, they're not huge.
The Emerald Spreader U is one to two feet height at maturity, so.
And they're not, they're not evergreen.
The U is.
The U is, yeah.
Spirea loses its
But that, and that's nice, you get a little bit of texture, you get a little variety. You may just want something.
In variation in color.
And you have
I drove right by there tonight, I'm gonna figure it out, and that's very visible portion of the lot. It's seen by everybody leaving light throughout, it's seen by everybody coming in light into that community.
Yeah, so, I guess, yeah, from my perspective, I, I would suggest that we take a look, or that you take a look at the landscaping there, and and, I don't know, make it
Think you want to make it taller.
I mean, taller, essentially.
I would think that, I mean, this is a very substantial, eight feet is a nice-sized dumpster enclosure. I think if the idea is to screen, screening, that we want something that is, I'm going to cover the majority of that.
Or at least cover, at least break it up so that it's not, is obtrusive in terms of a
Yes.
Big masonry wall.
Like, just based on the mature height listed, I mean, you're getting about three feet. Maybe look for something that's a little bit closer in my height, which is five feet, I'm a great measuring.
Do we have a, do we have a final, you mentioned, I think you said stone, which regarding the material, and I wasn't aware there was any stone on the, on the building, so I'm just seeking clarification on the masonry that's proposed. Is it, is it going to be a brick to match?
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I'm in a mason project, it's our intent, ba, based on conversations that we've had with planning and zoning, and then with this board as well, as to as to match the brick product on that, on that is, is to the building. That's the, that's the direction that we've been instructed to go down.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I think that's a better complement to the overall development as opposed to something of, of a lesser nature or of a more generic nature, so.
No, that, that is definitely our intent, and it'll look nice with that thornless honey locust, that's got a beautiful yellow tint to it, so I think that'll be a really attractive corner.
Well, while we're on the subject of landscape, I'll take it a little further, and there's a reference on the I believe it was on the landscape plan, it might have been on the existing retaining screen wall to remain. And there is a portion of that, it looks like a portion of it's remaining, because I believe that, that screen wall extends further to the corner. But there's a landscape area there, and it says that there's a new curb, and just wanted to understand more about the I guess, the integration between the existing retaining wall and the, the landscape area further to the east, or, and is there really a portion of that wall that's coming out?
We haven't dug that deep into the design as far as the final grading plan, but if I look at the contours that are currently shown, obviously, there's a more of a slope, the farther west you get, as we approach Southfield, it seems to taper off, and I don't know that there would be a need for continuation of the retaining wall as we extend the parking spaces further east from what's there today.
Okay, and this is, this is a different brick material than is going to be on the building, obviously, since it's existing, and I doubt there's a match there. So, I guess from my perspective, so long as it looks integrated and not up to the, and, and I certainly prefer the, the maintenance, or at least the retaining of, of, of a the retaining wall there, this, as a screen, I think it's a, it's a beneficial element, just, just questioning how well it integrates. Given it's, or, or for that matter, even if there's repair that might need to be done to it, since it's part Given it's uh, or or for that matter, even if there's repair that might need to be done to it, since it's part of the previous development. And then with regard to the land or the work that's being done on the site, is any of this, are any of these areas really at risk? Uh, with new paving or new utilities or that need to be incorporated? Or that just might be impacted by the demolition process of the existing building.
I understand your question, I don't think there's any areas at risk as we're reusing a lot of existing utilities that are already serving the building. Um, as we have shown on our plan, we show gas, sanitary, electric, communications, all happening at the rear of the building. And I don't, with the exception, maybe telephone for C S going much beyond the footprint of the proposed building. You start to talk about retaining all things like that, I don't think we're getting into those areas as a general statement, I think the client's intent is to. I would assume bill and overlay, uh, a lot of what's there today, you know, we're not looking at drastically changing what's going on. Um, you know, we're trying to utilize the existing parking lot as much as we can in its current condition. Look, you know, once again, limited to maybe some milling overlaying, ceiling stripe, new striping, obviously, but obviously, the the majority of the disruption would be. Within the immediate proximity of the building footprint as we remove the old building, install the new one and then. Warped to fit paint to cover, if you will.
Just just knowing how the construction process can can tear things up, I was just wondering how that was all. How it was going to um, overall impact the scope of of in 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 what the final. Uh, appearance is going to be. In terms of uh, it looking like a brand new constructed site, is it that we're from scratch? In other words, if we're for retaining existing surfaces and whatnot, just that there is a uh, an effort there to um. Make it look um. I guess from a holistic standpoint cohesive. In terms of its condition.
Client to to address some of that. Yeah, I mean, that's that's very standard for when we do a new project like this to come in and and seal, get that new black. Uh, you know, but but you know, but before we we spend all the money to go in and restripe. Uh, there typically is the, you know, the the sealant that's put on the top of the existing asphalt to make it all look uni- uniform. And then they come in and stripe on top of that, um, they they spend a lot of, a lot of money on, you know, striping and. And wayfinding that's painted on the ground and things like that, so they like to have that that nice crisp black, uh, fresh look looking asphalt. Um, you know, so it has that new, that new asphalt smell to it. But uh.
Understand what you're saying, um, and and from my perspective, I just knowing that. You know, when the building comes down, there's gonna be probably some patching and adjustments to this, so that the importance of this looking like. It's complete um, and cohesive isn't gonna be important to the community.
Agreed.
Yeah, I I would, yeah, okay. Felt that it had to be said, since I know it's a. And then there was a reference made somewhere I read in here about the landscaping, uh, the strip out front in the row of trees. And and the adequacy of the width. Um, from what I can tell, it looks like we're pretty much working with the narrow uh, width that's there. I mean, that 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 currently exists at the site, that's just the narrow landscape area, I don't believe there's any significant trees on it right now. And just that it's suited to the landscaping, in other words, the landscaping that's proposed for that area is gonna. Um, be able to thrive without uh. Looking. I hit all the items from Giffords Webster.
If I may, there was one, I mean, the one last thing. Um, the rooftop. Um, and they've addressed that uh, by saying if they are gonna put up equipment up there, it'll be screened. Um, but the last one, the last item, number seven, the open space standards. Uh, actually, it was the last, the second to last one on page seven of our letter. Um, and we just wanted to make sure that the planning commission felt comfortable with the functionality of the plaza at the corner. Again, and I think Suzie references at the beginning, um, whether there were any other considerations that planning had. Planning commission has in terms of um, those additional improvements.
Well, I I'll I'll speak and I, at the last meeting where it was discussed. There was the suggestion of incorporating artwork and there was a suggestion of incorporating um. The bike rack there and I was beginning to. Envision it getting maybe a little cluttered if we try to do everything, do all those things would be my my initial thoughts. So I guess from my perspective, I'm not, I'm not. Necessarily seeing it as a deficiency in the way it's presented right now. Um, there was a reference to the art object, and I don't know if that has has uh. Had any other discussions amongst the city or city council on that front. Although talking about just incorporating a public art as a possible for the open space. So.
This is the space in the corner?
Yeah, that's.
That's on the site.
Correct, yes.
So where is from our very initial conversation, the first time we talked about this? The idea was that there was gonna be something for the public good. That's what I remember. A bike rack on your site for me to park my bike and buy something in your store is not the public good, that's your good. So my question is, is where? Somewhere, you know, I missed it, I read through the P U D. I looked at the site plan. I didn't see anything yet to say Espinera is doing anything for the city. Everything is on the site that the benefits Panera. My question is still the same as my original question the first time we had this discuss discussion. What is Panera planning to do that's for the bu- good of the city that doesn't include something on that site? And that's all we were doing last time, sitting here nodding. Putting a piece of art in a bike rack is not a public good, show me you're gonna put a bus stop, okay, we need that. Show me we're gonna put something else, we need that, show me we're gonna put some signs up in the city, because we need that. For to put a bike rack up. That's still benefit you, so what benefits us? And where is that written? Because I missed it. And that was the first, that was the first conversation we had, I remember that, and I asked the same question.
In fact, can I ask a question, uh, as I'm just patiently listening here and they, Commissioner, to make a very good point. And is it typically, uh, when a corporation of such comes in, there's some kind of community benefits. Agreement or source, and I don't mean that formal, but I'm just agreeing with Commissioner in that respect, I I hadn't seen anything either. And I'm not saying some blown, wild blown out. Uh, effort, but you know, something, I don't think I've seen anything either.
Sure, so uh, I I remember the conversation clearly, and if Panera, if you guys want to jump in or if there's anything else that I'm missing, let me know, but. I think, you know, from our standpoint, um. There, there's a lot that's going in to this development as far as, uh, I understand it's it's a benefit to. You know, our company and it's a benefit to Panera and the fact that they're doing a drive-through, but uh, you know, the the public art uh. Was discussed, and that was something that I think Panera didn't feel comfortable resenting because they didn't want to. Uh, come off as, you know, going against any kind of culture and the community, and so it was, it was thought of as maybe, you know. Kind of doing some kind of a collab with the D D A and and allowing them to, you know, present something that they might want to show. And to us, that's a, you know, that could be looked at as a public benefit, um, I I think a bike rack does, uh, you know. I I understand you may look at it as a benefit to Panera, but it really, it benefits anybody, it enhances the pedestrian and they, you know, the walkability and the. You know, just the the overall uh, mobility uh, throughout the different sites, so I I do think that you could make the argument that that is a public benefit, and then. The other thing that I remember we we spoke about was the fact that, you know, even the existing Panera now. Um, at least uh, for the indoor and maybe a little bit of the outdoor is not just a place where people go and order. Uh, it's a meeting place, it's where uh, people go for uh, you know, interviews and networking events and. You know, little uh, you know, side meetings and things like that where, you know, Panera is not demanding to order. And so I think the other, you know, benefit that was discussed is the fact that they've got this entire, you know, outdoor, you know, kind of plaza that they've created. And I think just the overall development is a public enhancement, I mean, I think, again, I just, I like to go back to the argument that. There hasn't been a development in quite some time, and the amount of investment, the refresh of the. Of the landscaping, the brand new building, the, you know, pedestrian friendly. Um, you know, access that's created along with the, you know, a lot, you know, the collab, I think all of that has kind of been considered, and that's kind of where. Uh, we had left it at, so I didn't, I don't think that we were uh, looking to uh, add anything in addition to that, and I don't, I don't think that we.
Okay.
That there's a need to.
I just want to make sure I understand that. When there is a multi-billion dollar company, is building a brand new prototype store in the city, you've been here twenty years. But you don't think it's worth investing something for the public good, because you think the fact that you're putting a new restaurant is already making money at the existing restaurant. You're gonna put a public space where everybody can come meet to go to your restaurant, it benefits the landlord. But you can't find a way to spend a little bit of money to do something for the city that has supported you for twenty years. That's what I'm here. So I I. I'm I'm not here to debate, I'm just saying, that's what it sounds like. And if that's what it sounds like, then you don't do anything.
If 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 I could jump in real quick, and I don't know if this is getting close to what, this is Todd, um. Like I said, I've worked at Panera for nine or ten years, I I will say, and this may or may not be where you're getting at. Um, but I understand where you're co- coming from, this is the largest that I've worked on landscape package I've ever seen Panera do. I've never seen him do what they're doing on that northeast corner with that little plaza and the benches. And the street lighting, and so I mean, this definitely is above and beyond, now what whether that gets close to addressing your concern. Uh, this Mr. Oldman, I, you know, I I don't know, but I will say that. You know, in every regards, you know, the facade material being brick all the way around. Uh, the added glass, the enlarged patio that's on the north side, and I know it's a win-win-win, it benefits. You know, Panera benefits the landlord, it benefits the community, but they really have, and and I could truly say it, this is the largest packages and and and. And uh, the most brick I've ever seen on a building, so I mean, we, there really has been an effort to take this one to eleven, I guess, as opposed to just ten. And uh, so I don't know if you would see that as a benefit. Um, on the art side, we, you know, there's a lot of talk about that and and it's just. Art can be so, so subjective, it's hard for, like you said, a a company that size to to. To to take on and support a particular piece of art, because that then would get associated with them. Um, but at the end of the day, I I guess, all I can say is this is really above and beyond anything that I've seen Panera do. On a site like this with a new building, so, like I said, I don't know, I don't know if that addresses your concern, sir, but but I'll just throw that in there for consideration, if that's okay.
Do you think that based on what you just said? That Panera would be willing to partner with the D D A to support a project that they were doing that would benefit the public good then?
You know, I I don't work for them, I, those discussions have been had and on the meetings that I've been part of, I can't. You know, I'm not, it's not my checkbook, but that was definitely something that was uh, no, no one said no to it, let's put it that way, and there was consideration and people. Um, thought that was a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, I'll back up Todd on that, we did talk about it, um, pretty extensively at some of our meetings, especially when we knew that the art was a concern for you guys. Um, but I know that there were some concerns about what type of art would be placed there, and then the connotations with that as well.
I can understand that perspective from the. Art is a subjective thing in in.
And in the social media nature that we.
The Southfield or a surrounding community has has an an active art program that's been going on for a number of years now. And uh, there's comments all the time, is that art, is that not art? Uh, um, you know, can, you know, some people appreciate, not appreciate it, so from the perspective of sharing information about. Yeah, how do you go about deciding what that should be, that that definitely, I I would agree, there's a community decision to be made there, so if that becomes. Part of a program, working with the D D A. Yeah, I could understand that, not necessarily being or having played out.
Well, and the D D A is quite willing to do, you know, to work with Panera and turn on to. You know, on an art installation, it is something that they have discussed doing in the past, and so I think we would be happy to do. Something along those lines, but that's that there's no initial currently, right now, to do that, so.
Did it have to be art?
As I say, it doesn't necessarily have to be art. On that property, there's a bus, there's a bus stop, but there's no bus enclosure, maybe that's something, or, you know, they could partner with the D D A and and work on or something like that.
But a a a nice bus shelter, we only have two, we have the one in in front of City Hall, and then we have one up on twelve mile. Bus shelter, our bus system in Lethard Village is well utilized. Um, and in my opinion, abysmally provided for. Um, and much can be done. To improve the transportation options for for the for the ridership of uh, of Smart.
Maybe partnering with the D D A to help do something, that would be a win-win-win as well, because it's, you know, it's a win for the landlord, because it's on their property, it's. Win for Panera, because it brings people, people waiting for the bus can come in and, you know, get food.
I would imagine at least some of their employees are more than likely using uh, bus transportation. To and from, so this would also be a benefit to their employees, which I think would also be um, something they would want to consider and. And uh, be aware of.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have the issue with, uh, you know, selecting our, you know, and whether it's offensive to some some group of people or.
Jill's gonna share.
Um, so as you know, um, and I think we said it at the beginning too, that this is site plan review. Um, city council uh, has directed city attorney to prepare the development agreement, and that's still being drafted. Um, so it's been back and forth between Panera and the city attorney, and if you have recommendations. To add to that or to to make sure included in that, I think that would be appropriate to to mention those things. And then we can focus on the site plan itself, I think, um, because your job with the site plan is to give final site plan approval. Um, consistent with the development agreement, you're not able to do that because the development agreement isn't finalized. So you've got a couple of choices on that front, you could postpone decision on the site plan. Um, until a development agreement is finalized, or you can, if you feel comfortable. Give conditional approval to the final site plan, subject to, and then you can direct whether it's the city attorney. To confirm that the conditions of the development agreement match with the final site plan that you've approved, that would save. You for having to have this conversation.
That's gonna say, right.
The applicant time to come back here, um, because we can do the rest of that administratively, and I think that. That, you know, we've taken some good notes here, we can share those with you so that you can make a motion when you're ready to do that. But I think it sounds like the bigger issues that we've had have been resolved, um, and then I think if you are are suggesting. Um, that. That um, that public benefit that we've talked about, that that's a project with the D D A. Um, and I think that the idea of the bus stop is a really good one for all the reasons that Suzie said. So that may be something that you want to consider.
Okay. So that would be in the in the motion, that would be a recommendation to the the city attorney to. Work on the development agreement to include a public benefit.
Yeah, Scott, would you like a separate motion on their recommendation for the development agreement?
Yeah, and again, I think I, and I'm gonna agree with everything that Suzie and Jill just stated. That the, you know, the public improvement component of it is part of the development agreement, and obviously, planning commission being intricately involved in this. Uh, should have a say in that, um, you know. I think Les took the words right out of my mouth, uh, we had this discussion, it might have been in front of the city council, but. Uh, you know, looking at a plan unit development is a is a big deviation from regular zoning. And and regular approval process, I mean, we're, you're, uh, they're they're asking the city essentially to step away from a decade worth of planning for their village center. Uh, to allow for a use that was specifically excluded. There's gotta be an exchange for something, uh, the idea of a bus stop is great. Uh, think big picture, uh, we could always, and I know Sam's probably going to stop it, but uh, you know, they're think big picture. And you you know, that's something that we can, we can negotiate with the party, so if there's a recommendation. Absolutely, uh, and I would, I would make that as a condition of of, uh, you know, the whole process moving forward, I I don't think we need to. To delay it or table it, I think we can keep moving forward, but with that input from the planning commission.
Okay, so two separate motions. Alright. Well, those are, I I think we discussed big issues. I did have some additional notes and questions, they're not. Yeah, I mean, more more informational or maybe more a little bit legal, I was curious about the um. Entry drive that goes to the adjacent property. And whether that somehow, how is that Scott legally handled as far as, it's not part of the PUD. But it's part of the project, is that technically accurate?
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 not an additional curb cut onto a a primary or a secondary roadway, I think it's connecting. To uh parcels that are under common ownership, I I don't see a problem with it. Uh, in fact, I think it might facilitate or assist in some of the parking issues, um. Having that, you know, having the agreement with with the property of the north, but also having the the physical access to the property to the south. Uh, people are gonna take the path of least resistance when it comes to finding a parking space, so. You know, being able to, I was, being able to go south makes sense, uh, and you know, there has been. An investment into that parcel to expand that parking, so. Uh, you know, logically, that makes sense, and I don't see any problems with that from a, you know, from a standpoint of the, you know, legally approving it.
Right, from from the standpoint of the ownership, I didn't think there was. I mean, it it's an option, I just, I I just wondered if it was like technically, legally, it's part of the project, but it's not specifically. Governed by the PUD. Is that more or less a true statement? Or just.
I mean, everything is, again, everything, all of these these documents, all of these plans, everything gets encompassed into that PUD, and that becomes the. The working agreement between the city and the property owner and the developer, it's not, um. It's really not separate, so I, again, I, it's. Yes, it's all part of the PUD process, but I don't think there's anything additional that needs to be done to to implement it.
Okay. Yeah, I just curious whether, it's probably more behind the scenes stuff, I just wondered about the process on that because it, because it does. Transition off the property and onto the adjacent property, and and if it were separate ownership. You know, uh. Yeah, I imagine it would be more complicated or could be more complicated, or just require an additional agreement. Of of a of a certain nature, so. So, at this point, we we focused on the site plan approval. Um, looking on the development agreement, is that then? Um, other comments or questions from the commission on that front? I know, I I kind of understood that as a draft and 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 still being under development, so. Didn't spend as much time focusing on that. Um, but recognizing that that would have to be complete. Um, and uh finalized by the by the uh city council. We have any recommendations or things that we feel need to be incorporated in that that we haven't discussed?
I've taken a couple of notes, I don't know if it's appropriate, but uh, page sixteen, item six B. Sub item six irrigation installed at time of development. Is there any sort of plan for that available? I didn't see it, maybe it's there.
Todd, would you like to field that one for us?
Designed any irrigation at this point, uh, I'm not sure if there's an existing system onsite that would be maintained, refurbished. We just haven't gotten that far in the final design process.
Um, Jill, that was not a requirement necessarily for part of the site plan review, I mean, completion of the engineering on that.
No, but irrigation would be required, so we can just add that as a condition of the of the site plan approval.
Okay.
And that was the onsite irrigation, that was one of the things that we clarified with Panera, that. They were concerned that they would have to irrigate the street portion of.
Oh, this is the portion out.
Portion on their property.
Okay, not not outside the sidewalk, given that there's at least currently a large, uh, yeah, green space out there.
Item uh six E three, sub sub item lowercase three. Page seventeen, trash, outdoor trash receptacles as amenities. And there was no mention of it, or I didn't see it called out anywhere else. Are there generally provided outdoor trash receptacles? Will one be placed at the special space? At the northeast corner, I could see that area with the benches accumulating trash. On the ground if there isn't a receptacle, and I didn't see it called out, and it's a small item, but. Again, it goes to the community.
Yeah, so as far as public or uh refuse um containers on the patio, I do know that those are included in our designs. Um, Todd can probably provide more information on how much the quantity. Um, than I would be able to provide.
Yeah, they have, they have a, uh, it it matches all the furnishings out on the patio, so it all, it all kind of goes together, and there's. Uh, recycling and uh and and landfill. Available there, and it's um, it's a pretty standard part of their outdoor furnishing package, it's sharp looking. Um, we're currently not showing a refuse container in the northeast corner. Hadn't uh. Hadn't thought about it, to be honest with you guys.
Yeah, and that would be matching the ones at the building, correct?
You're 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 asking if if one in the northeast corner would match the one at the building?
Yeah, if in fact you're gonna pull one, I I mean, I don't know. There should be something up there.
People are gonna aggregate there, they're gonna sit on the benches and eat, and then boom, there goes the trash.
So, um, the ones that are gonna be on the patio have a little bit more complexity to them than just. Trash, they're trash recycling, and then also an area where you could put. Um, uh, you know, plates or the bowls or anything like that, so it's it's a little different. Than what you'd probably want, um, that's a little farther away from the uh, from the building itself, where you can kind of, you can kind of secure that thing. Um, I'm not gonna, I I I'm gonna be completely honest, we hadn't, I hadn't even thought about a trash. Uh, refuse on that northeast corner, but I think if we did, you'd probably want it to be resilient and. Uh, tamper proof and, you know, just a really.
Right.
Because it's a little farther away from where the normal control of of those type of things will be by staff.
Would expect it to be a decorative element, uh, when I say decorative, I mean, functional street furniture. Grade, that's that's complimentary to your design.
Yeah, so, you know, I I obviously, Jenna, we'll have to, you know, we'll have to talk a little bit with Panera, but I don't think that's. Out of the question to do like something that matches the benches maybe. Um, something that you would, you know, expect to be in an area that's a little further away from the building and. May take a little abuse, you know, you never know, somebody hit it with a bike or a skateboard or something, so you wanna feel the last and not start looking bad quickly.
While we're on the topic of that that feature, um, the pathway from it, is that envisioned as striped, uh, just striped asphalt? Pavement for the walkway, or is there a, is there a different pavement material anticipated for that? For that uh corner as well, and and then the pathway to the entrance?
All we've shown is striping and standard concrete from the patio. Or I'm sorry, for the plaza area, or whatever you wanna call it.
Okay. No, I think I'd like to suggest the possibility if it's for like a stamped concrete. Or maybe at the very least at the corner. Uh, uh, the to distinguish that is a little bit, um. I guess to give it a little bit more design oof.
Cloud, marble plaza feel.
Yeah. Just going through the rest of my notes.
I had two other questions, I don't know if they're tied to the. Contract or agreement. Uh, one was regarding the traffic study, will we address the traffic study at some point, is that? Or should I ask a question now, do you wanna?
You can.
Check, okay. The traffic study looked at one day in August last summer. How does that day compare to the busiest day in February, the busiest day in May? The busiest day in September, the busiest day in November?
I don't know if the Panera.
And then relative to.
In another, in the northern climate, it's like you're saying.
A non-COVID environment, you know, two years from now, when I know we'll all be clear of COVID.
Right.
What will, how does that traffic number compare to those days?
I know in terms of the number of vehicles, they're based on not only the the counts in the area, but also on historic and then comparable data. So looking at other Paneras and other locations, and I know that that the Panera's traffic consultant just popped his face back on the screen, so he can probably answer that as well. Um, but our traffic re- engineer did also review the study, he provided those comments, I think I included his comments, and then. Um, when the report was resubmitted, he uh confirmed those findings and and with those modifications that they had made. Felt that that was uh sufficient. So Matt, did you wanna?
Yes, and some of the um, the data. Go ahead, Matt.
I was gonna say, I don't know if there's anything you needed me to add, I think that was a sufficient summary, the one thing to remember specific to this site. Is there already is a Panera, there already is a customer base here, you know, in terms of the amount of new traffic that may be on the roads is obviously. Gonna be somewhat limited because this isn't a new market, obviously, it's a new offering, having the drive-through, mobile pickup. But it, you know, the the vast majority of the customers that use Panera already are on the roadways today.
And all of the data that was included in the traffic engineer study was based on new prototypes that have been built in other areas that are similar to the earth. That have already been built in that area. Um, so we factor in the number of seats available in the cafe, um, number of employees and all of that.
So the stone fee or the uh Apple Valley, Minnesota and Baldwin, Missouri sites. Are located on similar four-lane, five-lane roads, have similar traffic patterns on that road. And the population center around those stores is similar to the one here.
I'll backpedal a little bit and say that those are our next-gen prototype cafes that have both the drive-through as well as the rapid pickup lane and the bypass lane. Um, Matt can probably chime in more on the surrounding or the loads on the existing um or adjacent roadways.
Yeah, volume, uh, you know, uh, density of both commercial and. Um, residential communities are generally the same as those, uh, the two locations that we picked. Compared to this site, um, and I would note that actually, I think one of the sites. Does not have a bypass lane, and the other site doesn't have a loading zone, so it's it's kind of a mix of. Uh, you know, uh, mix and match here, where we do have a uh bypass lane that we are using using as a loading zone, so. Um, again, we looked at comparable sites that would operate very similarly to this one.
I was gonna say, from what I had, what I had read of the the traffic study, on on base value, it sounds it very fairly positive and not. As if there weren't really concerns at this time, as far as um. The queuing out onto, yeah, and the and the stacking, and I guess reality will bear out whether. It performs the same way as the other examples that were able to be monitored, so, um, I don't know if there's a. Easy way to predict that.
Why, as I remember, at least from the last meeting, I think they said they normally use ten spots and they have twelve, so there's already an a an extra buffer.
Buffer. If lines get long, you've got a bypass lane for people to decide, I'm out of here, I'll do, I'll walk in.
Right.
And, um, so.
Yeah. My uh, my mother lives in Baldwin, Missouri, so that, I could tell you right now, Manchester is a super busy, crowded street, that's. It is, it's heavily used, it's actually four lanes and a middle turn lane, so it's, it's, it's a big artillery road, so it's a great example. Okay, comparative.
Um, I'm gonna change the topic to lighting for a minute, and talking about the 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 land, uh. I guess there was a noted discrepancy between the, um. Uh, skipping the name of the terminology for the the plan that monitors the light levels. Photometric plan. Um, and uh, photo, I think it noted the photometric plan didn't take into account or didn't necessarily. Uh, account for the the lower level lighting or necessarily the total quantity of fixtures, can anybody speak to? What's going on with with the lighting plan, and if, just to give us, give me a comfort level that the photometric plan is, um. Is uh accurate with the lighting that is. Gonna finally be installed.
The, I could speak to that, the photometric plan is correct, the uh, the, the uh. Civil plan that you're looking at, uh, it was a lower uh light kind of concept, and this is a. A more, the photometric is what's gonna be going in, that represents the the uh. The light poles that are gonna be going in on that area. So that's something you just need to update, and when we resubmit to the city. For the billing department.
I'll add, I was happy to see the 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 screens or shades that element that was provided with part of the material, because one of the issues we sometimes have. Is light leaving the uh, the property and shining off into the neighborhoods. Um, so, uh, that's something that is. Um, something that I know has affected me before as a resident in the neighborhood, so. Um, it's just something that we wanna pay attention to, that it's the light levels are controlled. Um, for the property in accordance with the ordinance.
Absolutely.
So. Think I've reached about the end of my. My notes here, I don't know if there are any other thoughts or concerns or. Issues to raise regarding this and or whether we're.
Yeah, I had one other one. Um, I noticed some, uh, it looked like comments perhaps, Joe, from your team. Uh, in red regarding uh the signage. There was something about exceeds number allotted, was that, were those your notes or? Uh, having to do with the, um, I think the wayfinding signage.
They may have been, and we just uh were able to get our sign review, and I don't know if we got that to the planning commission today. No, okay, okay, we just sent it today. Um, because we didn't acknowledge that it was included in the packet um that was sent, so, um, I can. Give you the highlights of that. There are. Just do I have that in, hold on one second, please. So normally, the planning commission doesn't review signs.
Yeah, and again, I'm a new newer member, so if it's not our domain, that's fine.
Well, I think it's worth discussing because, and I was just about to bring it up anyway. Um, because of the number of signs that are being requested, do exceed what would be permitted in the village center district. So again, this is a building and a site concept that varies so much from. The regulations that the city has in place for that property in the VC district, that the signs are also then very different. Um, and I'll ask Scott Baker, how would you like us to address the signs?
As far as present presenting them tonight or just in general?
Well, I guess in general, I mean, the site package was included in the planning commission's packet, so you've seen the signs, and I can give you the highlight. Um, of what is acceptable by the ordinance and then what's beyond the ordinance.
Again, I I mean, I think it's because, because it is part of the general ordinance power, but the appellate authority for that. Does bounce back to the ZBA, so in some ways, uh, you know, planning commission doesn't serve as a ZBA, but. It does, it does have an effect on zoning and and, just like the uh community benefit component of the development agreement. Uh, you know, the opinion and input from planning commission is valuable. I think it's appropriate that, uh, as Jill stated, that planning commission do have some input on the signage. Um, you know, understanding that ultimately the decision's gonna be that of city council, but. I I definitely think it's appropriate for planning commission to to weigh in on those. But I, I definitely think it's appropriate for planning commission to, to weigh in on those.
Um, so if you've seen the cut, the, um, sign concepts that we've designed package that was presented.
Starts on page one forty-one of the one seventy-three.
It's way at the end of the packet. Um, so in the VC districts, uh, businesses can have wall signs on one frontage. They're on a corner building, they can have it on the corner frontages, all the frontages that face the street. So in this case, they would have three sides, the north side, the east side and the west side. But there are signs proposed on all four sides, so they do exceed that. In addition, the number of signs on each frontage is at least two. With both the pictorial sign and the text sign. We. Generally speaking, the, and in the large sign on the west elevation that's painted directly on, um, signs are not allowed to be painted directly onto a building. So that would be an additional, um, thing that we would like your input on. Um, there are the drive-through signs themselves. Um, we don't necessarily count them as signs per se because they really aren't intended to serve passerby or, or people who are driving down the street. They're really intended for users of the site. So we don't necessarily review them as signs. But certainly considering maybe the quantity of them. Um, there are, are also the directional signs that indicate where you park for your pickup, where you park for. The rapid pickup and then something else. There's two kinds.
Yeah, there's, there's drive-through rapid pickup.
Yeah, the drive-through waiting spaces. So there's, I think, five spaces that are noted on the Southfield roadside and each one of those will have its own sign. Um, in addition, there is a monument structure at the corner, the northeast corner of the site that has been abandoned because it doesn't have anything on it. It's just a brick structure at this point. There are showed that they might wanna use that, but no indication of the size of the, um, signs that would go on those structures. So I think some input as to, um, your thoughts on whether a sign at that location. Um, you know, your recommendations on that.
I guess, I guess.
They're all illuminated except for the ones that are.
Oh, so the directional ones aren't, aren't.
No, they're reflective.
Okay, so and they are geared toward automobile traffic and, and the drive-through, obviously.
Right, I mean, they're.
They're high on the building.
A lot of signs on the site. And, and it's, I think, because of the, um, there's a lot going on. So you've got some people coming through the drive-through, you've got some people who've already ordered, you've got some people just wanna park and eat.
Um, that exists at the, that exists at the Panera, I might add. I mean, without the drive-through in, in their current, in their current location because traffic is heavy and you've got pedestrian and you've got cars and you're people looking for spaces conveniently, so.
Right, and then we'll have some additional like safety signs about where people wait and stop and things like that too. We don't want it to be too, too much signage, so that people miss the stuff that's really important. Um, but certainly be able to navigate through the site and do what we need to do.
I, I guess I'm a, just a tad confused with, at least with the conversation with Scott ten minutes ago. I mean, part of the, the idea behind the PUD is to be able to relax some of the standards, you know, to.
Right.
Accommodate this. So, so wouldn't, wouldn't we as the planning commission be able to, I mean, you know, Scott mentioned the ZBA, I mean, wouldn't we be able to, uh, approve or allow in the development agreement more signage than normal because.
Yes, you may recommend that and I'll, and then that's the final action is with city council.
Right.
And that would be something that would go into the development agreement. So again, that's really more of a recommendation from the planning commission.
Right.
So your recommendation is about the development agreement, the signs, um, and then you, you can take action, um, on the site plan itself. Yeah.
Just remember Bruce, that the sign ordinance is not part of the zoning ordinance. That, that's the general ordinance power. So that's why, you know, the, the planning commission has the ability through the PUD to relax certain requirements that are implemented under the zoning ordinance. This is, it's kind of a crossover gray area. Uh, I'm not opposed to including it in the PUD development agreement, but it's definitely something that would have to come from council since, like I said, they would ultimately be the body that would grant relief um, under the sign ordinance. Uh, should, should we, you know, should we not include it in the PUD development agreement? And Panera would have to go through the, the ZBA to, uh, get that relief under the sign ordinance. That, that clears it up. Thanks, Scott.
What, what's the verdict on the existing monuments on? Is there any agreement been made, any understanding, existing?
It's, it's.
Let's, let's start out with the question of monument sign as it exists and, and where that stands within the, the city's ordinances.
So the monument sign isn't allowed in the VC district. You know, the idea behind that is that there really wouldn't be room for it.
Right.
So it's not necessary.
It's gonna be on the building because the building's to the property line.
Right, so it, it's already there. There's a structure there because it was there before. Um, so it would be non-conforming. But the ordinance also says that once a sign is abandoned for a period of time, that then it's not to be used again, it to be removed. Um, this clearly is not, has not been used for some time. Um, and so I think it's, it's an appropriate can, uh, question to, to ask yourselves if the structure is there. As Scott mentioned, you do have this flexibility with the PUD. Um, because this doesn't, it's not fitting the traditional application of the ordinances. But given the signage that's proposed for the building, um, the elimination of the sign that's proposed and some of the other things that they have going on the site. I think maybe inquiring of Panera, whether this ground sign out front is also really needed. Um, they're on a corner, they're, it's gonna be highly visible. So I don't know, and, and I don't know how you all feel about that.
So no decisions been made at all about.
Okay, I, right now, I would say that, I mean, it's not a real tall, it's not a real tall monument sign. I don't know how that would necessarily fit if Panera wanted to put their, the logo or maybe even just a Panera out there.
It's the very last picture in the package. It's, it's a band.
Okay, yay.
I don't believe it's illuminated and Jenna, you've been correct me on that.
This is why I love sitting next to you.
I, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess, I don't particularly have an objection to it. Um, would be my, my personal opinion. I don't know.
What, what did Panera say? She said, no decision has been made. So have they, what has, has there been any discussion? It doesn't really matter what we think now, have they, have they made a decision?
We don't have an objection to it.
Right, but it would, see if they came and said, we wanna do such and such, then at least we could discuss it. But right now, they're not saying anything and all we're doing is saying something. So why don't we let them say something first?
That's, I mean, that's a good reason why we included the signage package, just so that it could be, um, a discussion point so that you guys are fully aware of our plans. Um, the signage package does show that existing monument sign, existing to remain. Um, and I know that typically those would be illuminated. But I'm not sure.
Illuminated.
Or at least with ground lights. Perhaps Todd can help chime in on that and clarify.
Well, I'll start by saying this looks almost like a piece of art. I don't know what you guys are. I'm kidding. But, but, but no, I, I, to be a hundred percent honest, uh, with everybody, I don't think, like you were saying, the final decisions have made. But we know it's there and we obviously wanted to get feedback from, from this committee and from the city on whether or not, you know, it's gonna be acceptable for us to put that signage on there. Um, you know, if so, it's in the package. And like Jenna said, we typically in something like that would illuminate it. Um, just because, you know, it makes it look nice in the evening time. But we're open to suggestions or, or, you know, if you want it to be torn down, I don't think Panera would be against that either. Um, I know it's kind of open-ended. Um, I, I don't know Jenna, and maybe I don't wanna speak out of turn. Obviously, there's been all kinds of different conversations, but I don't know how critical that is to your signage strategy overall. It just was that it's, it's there. Uh, if it's there, why not use it? Um, the most sustainable thing is the one you don't have to build. So, you know, you might as well, you might as well use it if you got it. But I, I don't know, Jen, if that answers, uh, exactly what you were thinking, but I think that was kind of the strategy.
Yeah, and I mean, typically when there are existing monument signs, we do try and utilize them as much as we can. Um, and typically that would be eliminated.
And that might be just something that then, um, you would put when this does go back to council. The dimensions of everything, the dimensions of the monument sign, the dimensions of the signage, and then any kind of lighting.
Or if there's gonna be any change to the height to. A comp, yeah.
Yeah, they can't.
They can't, okay. Okay, so it would just be as is within the confines, I mean, repair, certainly. That may need to be.
Right, whatever they would intend to do for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Meeting and things like that, yeah.
In my, I guess I won't say it's final thought, but it's a thought, um, regarding, it does provide a bit of enclosure to, to the, to that area, the seating area out there. So if it goes away, what does the landscape become? What, you know, how do we complete that element? Which I think, given the nature of, uh, Southfield Road, the sense of protection there is a nice aspect. So, um, it may not be ideal by the monument sign by itself. Um, but it's, I think something that should certainly be considered if it's not. If, if, if that is a part of the signage package, doesn't come to fruition or doesn't come, you know, isn't a, an important step. I would think that that needs to be addressed in some fashion. Yeah, does anyone on the commission have a major objection to that?
I have a question. Uh, the sign, the signage and the lighting. We're gonna include all of this in the PUD.
The development agreement.
So then there won't be any issue about ZBA and all that. Okay, so I'll make sure. Okay.
Looking for that scene back onto the signage on the building.
What about the painted logo on the back?
Um. What are my thoughts, my feelings on that? Uh, is it something that we should allow because it is part of the PUD? I'm not a fan of painting brick in general. Would be my personal, um, view on it. So, uh, I wa, yeah, I. I don't know how I feel about that one.
I guess aesthetically, um, our intent is to kind of break up the mass of the facade, um, because there is a lot of brick there. Um, and kind of add some visual.
It's kind of a decorative element, which happens to be your logo, but.
Yeah.
This is the El Dorado side, right?
Yeah, yeah, the west side.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the landscaping is going to, uh, the lady peering over the.
You know, I, I can't help but think of the gentleman that commented, uh, weeks ago. And, you know, him looking on that sign of painted logo twenty-four seven. I don't know, I'm not in favor for what it's worth. Yeah, I think there'd be other ways to break up the brick than a painted lady logo.
Will the lan, will the landscaping screen that or no, from, from, from the El Dorado side or no? It's on the high part of the building, so, um, yeah. I mean, there's no visual section or anything that kind of, I, I suspect you could see the top. We'll see the top of this building because the walls of this building are, are taller than the bank. I mean, the bank, you see the roof.
No, you don't see it, right? You don't see her. So.
I'm thinking a little bit like the Nyx, Nyx on the painting.
I, I, you know, if you extend it, okay, who's gonna put the next painting on the back of the next buildings?
Well, requested or. I mean, this is, this would be locked into the PUD.
Yeah, no, I know, but it does set a, a precedence.
It didn't sound like they really, they're just trying to break up the brick, so.
Yeah.
You know, we don't mind looking at brick. They probably don't mind putting up, not putting up pictures. She's shaking her hand.
Yeah.
So I mean, you don't like the painted brick, take that picture off. If you think the neighborhood is gonna, you know, they're gonna be looking at.
I don't know. I mean, if I was across the street, do I wanna look at? That as opposed to just a, a nice.
Now we're getting into the art.
Enhanced brick facade. I mean, it's a nice enhanced brick facade.
There's enough side that you can take it off. They don't seem to have an issue taking.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I would say, I would say next, I would say, well, next, next, the, next, the painting, the painting or the painted, um, logo on the. On the, yeah, El Dorado side. I think the brick is probably appreciated enough, uh, until, I don't know if everyone's gonna have that opinion, but I.
It'll be gone.
Yeah.
Will they come back and say, God, I wish there was a big lady picture on that.
Murals and. So the, the only other, uh, signage type that I would ask you to talk about, and I know that the reason for them, the drive-through and rapid pickup sign. There's one on every side. It's, I, I mean, so just personally, I feel like it's a lot of signage that says the same thing on every side of the building. I think people will know that it's a drive-through and have rapid pickup. But that's, I guess, for Panera to, to talk about why you need it. And then for the planning commission to say that seems fine or not, seems like a lot.
I guess the question is.
Jenna, you jump in or, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
What was that, Todd? You, I can go or you wanna go?
You want me to jump in? So, so I've been part of the introduction of the rapid pickup lane with Panera for, for many years since they kind of came up with that concept. And the signage really is there for safety and it's there to help educate the public who this may, may be a new, new thing for. Um, so typically that's why you see, you know, that, that number of signs because it really does help clarify traffic flow of the site is what Panera's found. Um, you know, when, when we beta tested, we used temporary signs in different locations to see what was most effective for people when they're coming onto a site and how to, how to navigate the site and understand what's rapid pickup versus what is normal, uh, drive-through. Um, it's kind of a new, a newer concept for some folks, you know, uh, COVID actually, you know, helped all of us learn a little faster. But that's, that's why you see those where they're at because we did, you know, we beta tested this all over the country. And it seemed like these signs and these particular locations and the number of them really helped people better navigate the site. So that's, Jen, I, I, I don't know if I got ahead of you there, but that's, that was kind of my understanding and what we found as we went around the country.
Yeah, especially with, um, the difference between the rapid pickup lanes as well as the traditional drive-through. Um, just helping people understand why that lane might be, be moving a little bit quicker than every, the other lanes. Um, and then even having the digital menu board only on the one side, just because you're not technically supposed to be. You're not able to place an order from the rapid pickup lane. You're purely just going there to pick up your food.
Might help eliminate conflicts too, just, you know, somebody who's not familiar with the rapid drivers, why is this person cutting through, that kind of thing.
Right.
I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to look for the justification to, to remove the signs off the building that are the, the directional signs. And, and, um, in thinking of it as, I know the morning traffic, the morning traffic is usually headed south. And Panera has certainly been able to take advantage of that being on, you know, on, on that side of the road. Um, because it's easier to turn right than to turn left. Um, and, uh, needing to recognize, uh, I'm not at the wrong elevation there. That's the one I would go. You're coming south and so you have the sign over the side door, which is the door out to the patio area, which, you know, Panera is announced and you're trying to get direction to, really to get into those lanes. It is via sunset. That's the, kind of the ideal, probably from a traffic flow standpoint as opposed to somebody going, oh, I missed it and now I'm turning in the main drive up, off of Southfield Road. And then you have to make a hard right and you have to navigate, uh, what's, I would say is a more constricted pathway. Um, but you have a sign there too for those people who miss sun, miss turning on sunset. Um, which will probably inevitably happen for a while, although the traffic light really should help with that. Um, one would think, not that that traffic light is, is red very long on Southfield Road. I don't know. Does anyone else have any thoughts regarding that? Because I'm, I'm like seeing, it's like, well, we've got directions on three sides.
I, if I may, since we were talking about painted lady. Um, also on the west elevation is the rapid pickup.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, to me, that seems a bit redundant because you're already in those lanes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I was, I was leaning there too and thinking that, okay, it's another signage. It's seen from sunset coming out of the neighborhood. The people in the neighborhood will know.
Right.
Where they need to turn to go, to go in there.
Well, and either way.
I, I think if there's. If there's, if there's an opportunity to, to, uh, to, uh, lose one, that would be where. And that's, well, once again, it's not an illuminated sign.
Well, they are illuminated, I believe.
Are they?
Jenna, yes. They are illuminated and I would also suggest, I would agree with Suzie on that west elevation, that. They are illuminated and I would also suggest, I would agree with Suzie on that west elevation, that drive-through sign for the same reason. And also suggests that maybe that Panera bread sign that's on the west elevation. If you're okay with the sign, maybe that is also not illuminated or that all the illumination gets turned off at night. For all the signs, including the drive-through, just because of the proximity of the neighbors. I don't know that they see that necessarily, but. That sign at least for sure, the west elevation. Yeah, I don't see an issue with that, especially after hours. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, somebody who's been fighting that battle for, for about six years with another business. I think that would be appreciated by the residents.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, 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 I like, I like the sensitivity of, of the placement there. I mean, over in composition. But I would say. I would say that, that would be my concern is that there's this glowing object out there at night. So if it could be turned off. I think that would be. That would be beneficial to the, to the neighbors across the street. So, so I would, I would support. Not allowing the drive-through rep pickup on the west side of the building and, and then allowing the Panera breads. So that people can, you know, it's, it's a wayfinder and, but just so that it's not illuminated after hours.
I, I, I think though that that sign at that corner, it is facing El Dorado. But if you're coming down sunset, you're going to see that corner of the building. And there are people that are going to want to know, where do I go for the drive-through? I don't know. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I.
Cause the other one on the north elevation, if you're coming off a sunset is down the lane. It's almost to the front of the building over the door. And you might be well past the driveway to then have to turn on the solve.
No.
But you will see that sign with the clearance that also says drive-through. As you pull in that drive.
Right, because you've got the overhead markers or essentially restricting tall vehicles.
And there's one for each, because along the side of that post, it says drive-through and the other one says rap.
Traffic shouldn't be going that fast. And, and once you're familiar with, this is the new location. I think even the, even the community is going to find it a little easier to access than, than the, the current example. So. So.
Well, even if they miss it entirely and they go to the old Panera location, they can always go right through that brand new traffic circulation. Right on up. So they'll be all right.
Think we've beaten signs pretty.
The, uh, what time does Panera close?
Um. I'm actually, I mean, nine, maybe ten?
I believe it was nine, but I'm not sure if that was Panera hours and they, I mean, COVID hours, what did they say? Cause I know they were closing at nine for a while, but I don't know if it's ten. Go look it up.
Six to nine. Nine PM.
So at, when they close at nine o'clock, it's about nine fifteen. Even if that sign stayed, they're all going to be cut off anyway, right?
On the back of side of the building. Yeah.
So if the sign stayed, they're all off at nine fifteen or nine thirty anyway. So you wouldn't see it in the neighborhood regardless.
No, but for brand awareness, I would imagine in front that they're, they're going to be left on.
Correct.
Just the one facing the top of the room.
Yeah, it's all the ones that are on the front corners of the building, or if there was a monument signs, yeah.
But, but the signs that, that would face their neighborhood, if the signs stay, just for directional purposes, it's off at night anyway. If you're in the neighborhood, you don't see anything anyway.
Yes.
So if we left the sign, it would still be off. If we take the sign off, it's still off.
Yeah, but then it goes on, like the winner goes on at six o'clock in the morning, you know?
It's still dark.
Still dark.
But it's, but it, but it's going to be on in the morning when they're open. You want it on when you're open.
But I, I guess the, the issue is, is not to disturb the, the neighbors with the sign.
But you just lit up all the rest of the signs at six in the morning.
They're not facing the neighborhood.
I think Lester's point though is with like the menu boards and everything else.
Those are alright.
Those are the rear facing them.
Yeah, rear facing, yeah.
I guess that's my question. If you're going to turn them off at nine something, once one is on, they're all. Except for the ones in the front, they're, they're on all the time.
You don't have to decide.
I was going to say, they can control that. I mean, I can, we can.
I think they've heard your feedback.
Yeah, right. Okay. I think that's it. Was there any other questions that you want to?
I guess Jill has to give us the summary so we can make a.
We have to give a, give.
All right, and you better take notes too. So, which was, with, with respect to the site plan, I think these are the things that I've written down. With respect to the loading area. The, the delivery time and the logistics will not change from the current operation and that seems satisfactory. With respect to the dumpster, the same in terms of the pickup and delivery time and the logistics. But asking that for a taller screen to be placed around the dumpster to better soften its appearance.
Landscape wise, yes.
Landscape screen. On the western lot line, the landscaping that's in place, west of the lot that's being, west portion that's being developed or remain as is with the lawn and the trees. The parking lot will be resurfaced and striped. Did I get that right? Resurfaced?
Seal.
Sealed, okay. Such that it will look complete. Which I think was what the chair's comment was. With respect to landscaping, irrigation is required onsite. They will place a single purpose trash receptacle at the northeast corner plaza. Ensure that the street trees that are planted onsite along Southfield Road will have sufficient room and be maintained in healthy condition. Explore, because we didn't get confirmation on this, whether the plaza could be some other decorative type of concrete.
That's a plausible, yeah.
No, no.
Well, I, I, I mentioned both. And then kind of said minimally or.
Both of them.
Yeah.
E- essentially the, the, the plaza area.
Plaza area.
It's not the path.
Right, because the path is already asphalt. It'll be striped.
Well, and I know traffic across changing.
Yeah.
Pavement surfaces can become a maintenance hazard that's more of a, a, a liability down the road or a maintenance issue. So, yeah, I know you'd support that.
Uh.
See it on our roads.
And then. Uh, the lighting plans will be made consistent with the site plan. And.
And compliant with the, uh, compliant with something, which, which is almost doesn't need saying, but.
Right. Yeah. I think that's all I have for the site plan. Did you have anything else on the site plan?
All right, I'll take a stab at making the motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan at two seven seven seven.
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 Four seven.
Southfield Road for, for Panera Bread with the following stipulations. Uh, that the dumpster time complies with existing ordinances and, and remains the same as it currently does. The delivery time. Uh, on the ten by forty pad is also complies with existing ordinances and is no different than existing. Irrigation system for onsite is, is put in at time of development, taller landscaping. Uh, is placed on the dump, around the dumpster enclosure. Uh, a trash receptacle is placed on the northeast corner. It'd be stamped concrete in the plaza on the northeast corner. Uh, the lighting plan is consistent with the site plan. Uh, the parking lot is, is resurfaced and sealed to, for a consistent look. The Southfield Road trees are maintained and provided with enough room. And I think that was everything. Is there something?
Uh, might you say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we need to touch the signage?
I was going to do that in a separate motion. That's, that's a recommendation.
Okay, that's all right.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, hearing none, motion passes.
All right, and then I'll make a motion to recommend to the city attorney to work into the development agreement. Uh, potential public benefit with the DDA for a bus enclosure or some other. Benefits of the city.
Bus shelter.
Take, take. Well, I said, but I'm saying my shelter, but I'm saying or some other, but bus shelter would be the preferred.
Yeah.
Take out potential.
Yeah, take out the word potential.
That they work out an agreement that includes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
We're good.
And then I'll second that.
Those in favor?
I.
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 Oppose? That motion also passes.
All right, and then I'll make a third motion. This, I might need some help on this one with the recommendation relative to signs. Uh, that a monument sign, uh, the existing monument sign be allowed should Panera, uh, so want to use it. That there'll be no painted sign on the west elevation. Uh, no drive-through sign on the west elevation. And that the lighted signs on the, we said just the west elevation are turned off.
The west elevation.
On the west elevation are, are turned off. Um, when the, when the store closes.
You sure it's just the west elevation?
Yeah, then we said, didn't I thought we said, we say all but the front.
Those all except for the.
Yeah, so all, let me rephrase it. So all the lighted signs are turned off after hours with the exception of the southbound facing side.
Well. I'm looking to Panera. I'm looking to Panera for, for just if, if the wayfinding signs are illuminated. And do they necessarily need to be illuminated after business hours? And so, you know, we're not, we're not preventing you from those being turned off. Obviously, and, and it probably would be extra preferable. If they were. Yeah, understanding that the, that the logo and the Panera. Brand.
So we're just talking about wayfinding signs within the site that would be turned off, off hours. Those are not illuminated anyway, though.
Well, the wayfinding on.
The wall sign.
Yeah, the wa- wayfinding wall signs. And the Panera on the back. So that would be the only logo on the back, the one that's on the back would be the one that would, for, for purposes of. Of it not being a. Maybe an eyesore glaring to the neighborhood.
So I think that our team would probably be okay with the. The drive-through and rapid pickup signs being of, uh. Illuminated on the west facade.
Eliminated, okay.
And then, um, I believe that we would prefer maintaining. The rapid pickup and drive-through signs illuminated on the building on the remainder of the facades purely for an awareness. Um, that that amenity does exist.
Okay, so you're, it writes advertising the amenity. I, 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 I get that, that, okay. I, I added that in just with the thought that maybe those signs are turned off anyway. And if they're what, I mean, it's circuiting, so. You know, it's not a critical thing to me that they're turned off on the sides, but yeah.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's a recommendation to work. With, with the, the, the city attorney.
Attorney.
Or, uh, as part of the PUD, so that can be worked out between them.
Yes, yes.
That's your motion. Second.
Everyone clear on that?
I got it.
Clear. Okay. It's good. Yep, all right. Everyone approve?
Yes.
We got a clear, yeah, okay.
Hi.
I. All right. No one's opposed, so that also passes.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Wasn't it, wasn't it as hard as the motion you made me do last night, Scott?
Yeah, at least I typed that one out for you last night.
Yeah, I appreciated it.
Okay. Generator placement? I don't know if there's a reason that they would want to take a moment to pause.
Give everybody a good move around.
That would be nice, like five minutes. Kind of take a five minute break.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't know. Take a brief pause for the benefit of the commission and, and anyone who is still here to stay will re, will re adjourn in what, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
All right. All I ever think of, can I? Five minutes, I think of the zoo.
That's fine.
Same time.
Thank you.
See everybody.
And you love that.
That's the one I. We, we're, we're paused for five minutes, but, but, but I don't think the videos turned off, so.
I think that is ever stopped me. Quite frankly. Back of.
Let me talk to your agent.
Egypt.
Videos. There's pretty shame on the video. I feel like that should be played on like five minutes. It's really a favorite. There's nothing.
So Eric, now we can discuss business during the break. Uh, there's nothing, nothing that was provided to us on the generator placement? Is that going to be a total presentation or did I miss it?
Nope, there is nothing. That is just open discussion.
That's what I thought, like a lighter moment.
It's a light moment.
It's a, yeah, it's a light moment.
Exactly. Exactly.
There's nothing I, I, that would have been me putting that together, but I'm just.
We, we gave you more time. You could slip one more thing in.
No, no. Better when I can. Fly out. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Good. Excellent.
Always try to do my part. Then I go back to being me again.
What, mild banner? Mild banner loud.
I like.
I've been doing this.
And I like when you go back to you again too.
Doing this a long time.
Just the way you are at any moment.
Next one's the end. Waters.
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah, my water's finally gotten down the temperature or up to temperature. From too cold. Then. When it's right out of the fridge, yes. Give it a chance to warm up.
But don't say it, please. They might get cold.
Eternal now. You were prepared. You knew, you knew. Yeah. Um, I, no, generally, generally not. The crazy, the, the crazy thing is.
I'm okay, but I know.
Told it's like, oh, like you're hot. You're always hot. It's like my, take my temperature. I'm like ninety-six, ninety-seven. I'm never hit eight, ninety-eight point six as the normal. A steady, a- a- and I don't know, I can adapt. I don't like, I don't deal with the heat well, generally.
Yeah, I was comfortable. Everybody else was so hot here.
I did too. Yeah, me too.
And, and I'd be out in the, you know, temperatures in the fifties if it's sunny. Yeah, yeah, I don't need to, if I'm doing work, I mean, it's yard work, you're active outdoor. That's like perfect temperatures, temperatures in the fifties to sixties and sunny. Throw rain into the mix, different story. Rain and wind, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I didn't hear, uh, a lot of it, but when he brought up less product, the community benefits. You know, when they come in, it's clearly there was a need to expand because they're getting the, the traffic that they look for, and it should. Look back something, you know, to the community, and I thought that was something missing. Uh, that was glaring to me, so.
Yeah, I know the early emphasis was on the, the masonry and the, the brick, the additional materials that go, if they said above their standard, you know, above and beyond what their standard would be. And, and I'll acknowledge, I mean, I acknowledge that, but that's, that's a criteria we'd like to provide for the commercial district anyway, of the, the.
Senior citizens in the program, something, you know, I, I don't know that, but I think it's something that's over, and I'm glad Les brought it up, you know.
Yeah. He, he was the strong, strong man, strong man. Well, right, and it's, it's a matter of, I was trying to figure out, within the scale of, it's, it's, it's not like this is a large property where you could. Say provide us addition of green space, or, you know, you know, when you think of a planning the development. It's usually a large, at least, a big, a large piece of land in some special development that's going to occur. Um, not that it's not a special development, but it's, but there's a very. There's a very focused purpose in, in this.
Yeah, well, I think of like the, the, the marijuana order that we, that we hadn't put in place was, uh, you know, I mean, there's a huge community benefit, and these, these guys who are looking to. You know, when, when, before we pulled it off and, and went to the vote, we're gonna go to the voters, and these people have been putting hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the.
Yeah.
Shop into the community, so.
Wasn't the bank of P U D?
The bank? Oh, the D U ordinance is brownie.
No. No, they, they were able to take advantage of the revised zoning, so that was assigned to the site, yeah, from, from what was originally constructed there, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we should get going then.
Maybe, maybe we should get, put a bigger hole back in that saloon.
Let's resume. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh. Discussion about generator placement, so I think Suzie's gonna lead us in on that.
Yeah.
Maybe, we've had, we've had, uh, is this, uh, originated from inquiries from our residences or our businesses or both? Or just curiosity about how should we handle this?
Yeah, um. Inquiries from residents, um. And so, you know, all right, one, okay, there's a request, two. There's another request, but now we're up to at least three, um, and that tells me that we should perhaps now take. A look at the ordinance to make sure that our standards for generator placement. Are the standards that we should have for generator.
I was gonna say, home, home generators are. While not new. Are more mainstream than they used to be, so it's a.
And, um, and I, I don't know when the last time was, just the city took a look at the, the generator. Setbacks, um, and standards. Uh, but I think even just based on the comments that I've gotten from the building official, meaning. Well, I think it's beneficial for us to have, um, decimal standards in there, the fact that they're in there. Tells me that, eh, that was probably when generators were really loud, right, um, and that's not necessarily the case anymore.
No, but you could still. Qualify that, you can still qualify that and, and, and still have requirements that are in align with, alignment with maybe the. Best technology or at least the.
And, and even the best technology is, I mean, it's lower than the one our standard is, which is great, but I think that that just. That just tells me that, yeah, that was probably when that standard was put in place, um. And that a lot has changed, and this is time for us to reconsider at this point, um. Also, you know, as I was thinking about it today, um. Two thousand nine?
Yeah, that's when we drafted it.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh. We've come a long way since two thousand nine. Um, so in my following, um, I did talk to one of the, uh, residents who, um, made our most recent inquiry for generators. And, um. Oh, shoot, I just lost that train, I want to, right over there, um. I, I think that, uh, one, one of the things that, and I'm not sure if this was truly considered when. The ordinance was put in place in two thousand nine, but you know, we have extremely irregular lots throughout this city. Um, right now, generator placement is in the rear yard only. Um, there is no, that, there are no provisions really for having it in the side yard, um. So there are only resources to seek variance, and I think that there's probably. Uh, we should probably be more considerate and, uh, have a little bit more flexibility. Um, related to this placement. Um, I think as we've seen over the last couple of years, even power outages, storms, I mean, it's just going to. Increase, uh, people's desire and therefore their request to have. Generators, um, placed on their properties, uh, I just wanted to open it up and see what y'all have.
So with the driver and, and some aspects to think about here, I guess, and, and I understand that the irregular lots. And whether irregular lots are an opportunity or a, um. Well, an opportunity on, 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 on maybe a couple of different ways of looking at it, an opportunity to not have it in your living space. If your backyard is set up for a living space. Which then enters into the picture of, but on the side, it impacting. Your neighbors and maybe being not desirable or acceptable for them. So, um.
And I guess to me, it, it also opens up the question, you know, what about air conditioners? Right, because air conditioner is kind of the same thing, so.
Kind of fit in that same category.
Category, so right now, we only require, we, we only allow them in the backyards as well.
I suppose it's reasonable to have that same. To have a, a conversation on the two, the difference for me between generators. And air conditioners is an air conditioner is running twenty four seven during the summer. Um, generators are only going rerunning as needed, so just that. Constant. Drum of noise.
I mean, I think the two, for my perspective, the two biggest things that would, you know, potentially justify an ordinance that would limit the location of either an air conditioner or. A generator would be noise at the property line or, uh. Site, so I think you could address both of those with the, the noise ordinance, or I'm sorry, with the noise limitations that are. Is by well as, um, at requiring adequate screening for any, any, uh, installation in a side yard. From, from my perspective, I think as Suzie has indicated. With an increase in the number of requests for them, that generally means that it's worth revisiting. Uh, my recommendation would be to expand the location to cut down on the number of, uh, variances that are required or requested. Um, so that, that's just kind of where my two cents on it, um, sorry to cut you off, Suzie, but I was trying to complete your thought.
No.
I, I, I can appreciate the cutting the variances if it gets crazy, but I also want to, would want to be able to protect or give, um. The neighbors' consideration that it just, you don't open it up to, it can go on the side. And in, in, as well as the back.
Look at a distance from the unit to the neighboring home. That you could even reduce if they had one in their side yard, because we have a couple now that are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or other equipment, so like if they, they had other mechanical equipment in the side yard, maybe that could be reduced, but if they didn't, then it would have to be larger. I think there's things that we could do with this ordinance to be, we could.
Right, I, I think, I think it needs exploration, I guess is what I'm saying, because I, I think we want to make sure that we're not. That we're addressing it properly and not creating, um, any loopholes.
Right, well, because, because to Suzie's point earlier, uh, you know, the fact that the generator is only used, you know, in, in. You know, limited situations, but in those situations, you know, if there's no power, then the neighbors are not gonna have. Power either, so then they're gonna have their windows open, and, you know, so then you've got the potential for noise there.
Outlet that they can plug into.
Right. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, just, just thinking out loud here.
Well, since I have a generator. On the side and went through the process. The process needs to change. That'll suck, the lot sizes are not normal. Uh, as long as you can get an okay or some type of written approval from your neighbor. So that you don't have to go through the public hearing process, then at least that way you know you have an agreement with your neighbor.
But that's the neighbor today.
Right, but well, the problem, the problem is, is that some people, I have a generator and the person next to me has a generator, okay? They can't put their generator in their backyard, they have a pool. Okay, but if the power goes off for five days, I'm not letting them plug into my generator, no offense. Okay.
Well, but even if, even if they could.
But the problem is, is that when the ordinance was done, people lived a certain way. And I think to what Bruce said earlier, some people have living outside space now. Houses are used differently, so it only. Kind of begs the question, we're gonna have to think differently. Uh, you know, I know somebody that wants a generator in later. Almost everybody in their sub wants a generator after their power's out for a week. So when, when you say I want my generator here, I say, wow, that's really close to your neighbor, well, he wants a generator right there. So now you realize that everybody's trying to think, that's part of the expectation is, you know, does the house have a generator? Because we don't believe in the grid anymore.
At, at which point does it turn into, uh, well, let's get together and have a block generator.
Or subdivision, yeah, yeah, I mean. But, but you have that.
Is it gonna go there?
We don't have, we don't have anything that addresses that either, if the whole neighborhood decided we wanted to get it, or subdivision, or even the new later, the, the area where the house was. Someone decides to build three or four houses, if they wanted to put a generator there to s- service all of that, that's not there either. So I think you're right, that we need to look at it. Uh, but it is, there are a lot of reasons behind it, people live differently, the need is different now, the generators are much more high tech. Uh, you don't really know the difference between a generator and an air conditioner and a lawnmower these days, I mean, my generator comes on once a week. And I swear, I think it's the guy cutting the grass every time. But, uh, and it runs for fifteen minutes and then it's done. Except for when the power goes out. And then everybody's your friend, everybody's your friend.
The power is out, then, yeah, it's not.
But it just sounds like the air conditioner.
I'm not in my Zoom meeting, that, our, so.
But, yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think we need to at least update it. To allow for people to be able to state their case to someone other than having to go all the way through this process. Especially if you've already invested in getting, uh, a company to come out, they've already done a study to find out where they can run all the, the gas lines and the power lines and. What's the most appropriate place based on the exhaust of the generator and the noise it makes, a lot of work is done before it gets to the city. And the last thing you want to do is spend eight thousand dollars for the city to tell you. No, you can't have a generator just because you have a deck in your backyard when there's nothing next to you but some trees.
Right.
That's just not fair. So I think we do need to look at it, and I don't know how we would reward it, but I think.
We're not gonna put in the permission.
Well, I mean, I'm just, because, only, only because when you go for a variance, they notify your neighbors. But they get to complain.
Variance goes with the property.
I've worked out, like, hey, you can have, uh, run a court for you, but maybe the other person on the other side of you, their neighbor said no, just because they were being difficult.
Yep.
And then you get something that they don't.
Yeah.
So that's not.
Well, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, and I think we can definitely work out the screening and.
Yep.
Like just some of the variants, the, the variants typically, not typically does, the variant does stay with the property, so, you know, if, if. You know, down the line, another neighbor is a problem with whatever the variance is, then.
That would, that would be, uh, yeah, our, our realty hardship.
That'll, that'll also save the person spending, you know, money on a generator and then another three, four hundred dollars and trying to get a variance.
Well, and at this point, I mean. Delaying their installation process too, I mean, that's a whole other, with the Z B A and everything that they have to do. Uh, to secure variance, I mean. That's another, let's call it two months realistically, and, um. Uh, I think that, I. While I, while the, the shortage, the, the labor shortages and the material shortages. They'll resolve themselves at some point, hopefully in the future, right? Um, I mean, that, there is always lead time to get these sort of projects done, I mean. I, I wanna concrete patio. Why happen in so probably next spring, right?
About your air conditioning.
There's always that, each time, so just, I mean, I guess to last his point, like changing the process, let's make it a little easier for. Our residents.
Do you have three variances in front of you or three requests for generators?
There is one request, there's one active request right now, we have had. Request, previous requests leading up to this point.
For variance.
For variances for the generator placement, yes. I mean.
It's another issue too, that it's also been brought to our attention that some people have, uh, just installed them in their side yard with, uh, foregoing the variance process, so. This, you know, there, where, you know, again, generally when there's, you know, two, a couple of variances, that means there's. Probably at least twice as many that just went ahead and did it without getting the approval, so, you know, that in a, in an effort to. Try to clean everything up and, um. You know, make it streamline the process for residents, I think it's, like you indicated, it's, it's an appropriate time to take a look, another look at it.
I agree.
Worth looking at.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll, uh, draft up a little something for you.
That's, that might be more or a little less contentious than dealing with, uh, impervious surface coverage. But that's probably a bit more complicated.
That is definitely gonna be a bit more complicated, but we'll, um, so we'll track something for generator placement. Um, for you to consider at the August meeting and hopefully you can get something settled.
I think the geometries always are gonna create some sort of challenge, geometries of lots. Have the potential to make that a challenge, I mean, especially if you start to say. On the side, but so far from the front. Or, you know, it, those conditions are gonna be different, there's always gonna be something where, like, oh, yeah, you could fit it in there, you can screen it nicely and it's not.
It's not as easy as just saying you're gonna put it on the side.
I know that, because it's, it's about tying into.
You still have to tie into all the other utilities, so it can only go in so many places.
Right, because you, where your, where your entry service is, is where it's going to want to be close to.
Yeah, and then if it's not close to that, there's a lot, there's a cost to it, but it's, it's not, it's not just saying, oh, I want it over there.
I mean, that's the same thing, the air conditioning is like, probably the condensing units are the same thing, they're in the same location, they want to be close to where your electrical source is.
They do.
Well, I, I mean, there's, I, I am.
Valuable real estate.
Building official, like, I didn't know, like. Quite a bit to be dangerous, right, but I, I mean, there's. The, the building official relies heavily on those installation standards, uh, you know, I mean, can't be within five feet of anything combustible. I, all right, there goes your deck, tracks are wood or not.
I'll ask, I'll ask the question, they, these, these are not, um, we're not seeing situations where they're, they, they have to be up. Adjacent to the house, they're not, they're not like off at the back of a property. Or, or, they can be, which, which, which has another, that's another dynamic, because then it's closer to your neighbor or your neighbor's lot line and those sorts of issues, so, yeah.
Quite honestly, one of the things that comes to mind is the pervasive backyard flooding, so I don't think it really makes a whole lot of sense to say. Yeah, you can put it out, like, all right, you've got your deck and, okay, so you could technically put it in your backyard while your backyard floods.
And you've got, and you've got your sanitary lines going out to the back.
Case, I mean.
Yeah.
Safety tells you just to put it up.
Right, right, so that you don't have buried cable. That's right, right, yeah, so, yeah, there's some complexities. I could dismiss the complexities of the generators.
Excellent, thank you.
Good, so we'll move on to, uh, discussion of impervious surface. Okay, good, so we'll move on to uh discussion of impervious surface coverage.
Great, well, so. I am gonna let. Jill and Eric take most of the lead on this, but um, so we have been discussing this, um. Kind of in a few different ways, stormwater management. Um we've talked about.
Infrastructure.
We've talked about it through the infrastructure committee, even just infrastructure in general, how do we want to? Um I notice it most when we talk about uh installing permanent parking in the public. Right away, um along our residential roads, I mean, some people have. Uh they've paved it, they've gotten, some people have gotten permits to pave it, some people have just installed it. Um some people have just worn. Dirt paths into it, um so that's one way that we've kinda, we've kinda um. Come across this issue. Um and it is, like you said, a whole lot more complex, um and serves a whole lot more discussion, and I think we really need to start. Taking a deeper dive and thinking about how we can address these issues, so. That said, I'll, Jill will take over, or Eric, whoever really wants to uh go through this memo with us, please.
Alright, well, I will just give you a, a highlight. Um as I know it is getting a little bit on the later side. Um so in the packet, we gave you a memo that was really intended to just be a starting point of the conversation, so why would we be talking about? Impervious surface coverage, um why is it, uh you know, why would we wanna regulate it? And then how some, how we might begin to think about doing that, so. I took a random sampling, we've got fourteen uh residential properties, just to kinda see where we're at now, and so it's a real kind of a windshield survey. Looking at uh from an aerial, um the size of the properties and the size of the house, driveways, pools, little accessory structures and whatnot. And I picked them all over the cities to get a good representation. Um and it was the smallest, lowest amount of coverage was about twenty-four percent and the highest was fifty-three with the average being thirty-five. Which falls in line pretty well with what other communities do regulate when they regulate it, so. It, it seems like a good place to start with looking at that. Um we did include some of the neighboring communities and how they handle impervious surfaces if they do, or lot coverage. And those can be defined in different ways, um so some of the options for regulating that would be just have one. Set standard across the board, another option might be to have a sliding scale. Um to allow, another option would be to allow some offsets if we had, if we allowed for more. Um coverage in an area, then how could it be offset on the parcel with something better than just maybe grass? Um like a bio retention of rain garden, um other kinds of things like permeable pavements and even green roofs, which I hope you enjoy that picture. At the back of the memo, I thought that was pretty cool, I don't know anybody that would do that, but. Um that was an interesting video.
I, I have trouble imagining people maintaining it.
Yeah, well, it's, see them, I guess, like, you just don't let it grow, but um. Bless you, you need a lot of.
Thanks.
Or to hold that, that's not.
Yeah.
Something that you're gonna add on.
And it's gonna, and it's gonna complicate your roof and.
It would, but if you were planning it that way from the beginning, then I think you would make all that accommodation, but anyway, it was just there because I thought it was kind of cool.
I don't know if it's that difficult, Jill, you drive around, we got a lot of people grass on their roofs in the city, I see the tickets all the time.
Let me ask a question, with, with the increased um. Increase in storm episodes, um has there been complaints both from the residential and the commercial side about drainage fees? Increasing as a result of that?
No, there's no, there is no drainage fee, people complain. About the flood, about, and like, ad, ad nauseam.
Yeah, and back up.
The drainage at, both in the front yard, in the backyard, uh the side blocks, in row. They, they have, I, I mean, they, when I say, when I said pervasive flooding, I mean, uh pervasive flooding in the city. So we are working through all of our infrastructure projects to do best we can to improve drainage, um.
Yeah, a lot of it is due to the ditch, the, the ditch system.
Yeah, the ditch system needs a lot of TLC.
But it's interesting, it's interesting.
There's no fee.
Yeah, it's interesting you bring up the fees, because one of the things, we, we had uh a presentation at the infrastructure committee about a year ago. Can't remember the name of the, the organization that helps cities do this, but there's a lot of cities around Michigan who actually tax the, the, the stormwater. So it's, 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 yeah, remember, it's, it's based on the amount of uh each house, it's based on the, the amount of. Impervious space in, in the house, and then there's, you know, uh, uh, a tax associated with that, because. The, the, the thing that legally justifies it is, is the fact that that, that goes into the storm, the storm system, which is something that we as a city have to maintain. Um so we had that meeting, we didn't really move it, move forward with it, but uh it's, it's something that we, we, we could always consider.
Well, you know, from my past history and work history is I, you know, did some work with DWSD in the past. And um I know that they um um afforded businesses credits. Uh they had started bio retention pond or, or did something to uh increase the absorption of, of the water, so. You know, that's a, a thought process, because the reason I asked about the drainage fees is that, does it make a difference? Uh I, I think that it would have to be some significant. Uh pervious surfaces to make a difference, and, and would we be willing to agree to? Uh companies uh going forward to increase that? I don't know, you know, uh I, I think that probably looked toward more of rewarding them for their efforts. Uh in the impervious services, credits or otherwise.
I agree, and rewards, rewards are better than.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think there's, and this is maybe a separate issue, but, and it's maybe not so much one that, I mean. Access parking, I mean, we, and we know we don't have access parking by, by the, by the, the zoning requirements.
Right.
But sometimes those zoning requirements require more parking than is actually used, and you have pavement, paving, and this is more. Yeah, certainly speaking to the commercial side of things, there are a lot of examples of. Very large parking lots, some in buildings that I worked on very early in my career, and I was like. Scratching my head, cause I thought these lots are never gonna be full.
Right.
Um why do we do this? Why don't we do something more? And it's a, that's a separate issue, so I won't go too far down that path, but I think there's certainly opportunities there.
Well, but, but that's the, as you said, it's commercially focused, I mean, I, I know that there are. Your family's a great example, you, a, a driveway full of cars. Lots of drivers, and I know that you're not the exception um in the city or anywhere else, really, um.
No, and I, and I don't consider that the ideal aesthetically or otherwise.
The side street parking, I mean, there are no provisions right now. For those, those extra parking pads that are al- along our streets, there's no provisions for it, I mean. Yes, you have, for an extra some amount permit, so you can pave in our right of way. But we should have standards, in my opinion, we should have standards or, or consider just not allowing them. Because that is over parking.
And, and it is about, yeah, are you trying to encourage something to the detriment of the. Neighborhoods and the appearance of the neighborhoods. Um and, and I mean, I know there was a longstanding, you shall not park on the grass. Cause I've heard stories back from my in-laws and others about, about uh neighbors riding on neighbors when they. Hold their recreational vehicles and for, you know, they had that, you've got your three, three day window or um whatever, so. Um and I've, I know there are of examples where I believe they've been able to get past it by throwing down gravel. You know, and now they have a surface that they can technically park on, but how much of that do you want to encourage? Um do we want to encourage, you know, vehicle storage? I don't like having all my cars in the driveway either, so um.
I mean, I, I, I don't think that that's um. I, I don't think that that's activity that we necessarily want to encourage, I mean, I know we don't allow for overnight parking. Um on our streets, so um. You know, with that said, if you, if you know you're going to need to, it's. Where you know you're gonna have, uh you know, a guest that's gonna need you, you can make arrangements with the police department to get a, a special. Well, special permit, a piece of paper.
Special dissertation.
Something to put in your window so that something else doesn't get put on your window.
So, I mean, there, so there is a way to uh work through those, those extra parking challenges. Um I mean, I, I've thought about this before and, and in other communities as well, and. Find no means in my saying way for village equates to Montreal, but. If you live, if you lived in the city, you, if you, on those blocks, you have special parking permits. To part, to allow you to park on the street, I mean. That's probably an extreme solution, but it's a solution, right? I don't necessarily think that. With our streets being so narrow, that we should be encouraging. Residents to add parking that our streets can't handle and our. Ground or stormwater systems can't accommodate either.
So it's a parking issue. It's not really a Bigfoot issue, a building issue, other than perhaps the commercial side. You know, Birmingham had Bigfoot issues and caused other things. I mean, we don't have an issue with people putting structures. Per se, I mean, we don't have lots of that issue, there might be an odd person here or there that's putting in a large patio. But how much of that is happening? It's really, it's a parking issue.
It's a parking, but it is an impervious search, search issue, right?
And it's also a, I mean, there's different angles to this, and one that I, I, I think I object. Had personal objections to was um. The circular drive right up to the front across your lawn, which. Initially, my perspective was, and I still probably very largely. Have my opinions based on that, is this a, a sense of prestige that you can, you've got your drive and you can pull up to the front of your house, and that's one.
And you got room for three more cars.
And you have room for more cars, um but there's also the, and you have to watch for this as well, and that's. Uh, uh, an accessibility issue, in other words, somebody needing or wanting the convenience of being able to. Shorten their walk between their vehicle because of their physical condition, so um. Yeah, that's just a complexifier in that, that aspect of making a consideration. That said, I, you know, I prefer to see as much green space and, and, and having the visibility of the green space. As opposed to seeing lots of pavement.
Well, and like I said, I mean, we've talked about this in a whole lot of. A whole lot of different ways and different times, I mean, obviously, I am, I see streets a lot, so I'm focused on streets and the parking, but. Um the other thing we see a lot is the drainage issues and drainage isn't necessarily, and. I mean, that to me is more holistic of the stormwater management, and that ties directly into this impervious surface, because we have. So much. So much, I, I mean, there's, we have to find, we have to find a way for. Um businesses and residential property owners to help. To help with the stormwater management problems, so I think.
Are we addressing that though with the ditches and roads projects? Well, we were told that that's gonna fix.
Yeah, so, but, but the, 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 the ditches are only, only the seven point one miles of ditches that have roads that are. Um being improved are the ditches that are being.
No other ditches are being.
No, that, that was the, the original proposal in two thousand nineteen would have, would have addressed all ditches. Um one thing I, and I actually just um. Emailed with the uh new city administrator on this is one, one of the things that we did put into the proposal. Uh because you're, you're talking, we still have nineteen miles of road, you know, that, that aren't getting addressed, and if you think about the digits, that's really thirty-eight miles of ditches. Cause there's ditches on both sides of the road, so um one of the things that we said that we were going to do. Um was use code enforcement to go after, um you know, the obvious things, you know, tree roots that are blocking the ditch, uh culverts that have heaved. Um you know, blocked openings for, for the ditches, and we haven't done that, and I brought that up a couple of times, and now that we have it. City administrator brought it up again, because we're gonna be hiring a code enforcer soon, and wanna see that that is something that gets addressed, because. Even, I mean, just, just by addressing that low hanging fruit. Granted, we're not gonna get the ditches reconditioned to the point where the seven point one miles um are, are going to be, but. Taking care of that low, low hanging fruit will make a big difference. I mean, it will definitely improve the flow in the ditches, especially, I mean, you just think about how many heap culverts we have, and that, that's an immediate stop, blockage. Of, you know, uh, ditch system for the, for an entire street when that happens, so.
And to me, I think that this, this kind of discussion and, and, and addressing sort of this impervious surface coverage is. I mean, it, it's kind of low hanging fruit, like this is a way for us. Um collectively as a community to do something on a more individual basis, right? To make sure that we're doing things, especially if we're taking what Terrence said and finding different carrots. Um we had, we had a rain garden program before. I, I know that there is challenges with that, um and there's challenges to making sure that. Those rain gardens are actually installed the way they are, they should be, and they're.
Maintained.
You know. However, that is something that everyone can do on an individual basis, and we can all think. It's a low hanging fruit, something else we can do. Um so I think that we should do as much as possible to encourage these kinds of. Of, of more individual stake action and give some, give some guidance and standards, so.
So we can come back with some language to look at and talk about in August.
Okay. That's a plan.
The only other thing that I'll mention is that we include, we don't have to talk about it tonight. My battery's running low.
Yeah.
Um but I included an updated zoning audit, so we had done this in two thousand sixteen. Um and we've done quite a few things from that over the last few years, um so we've noted that in the audit, and then added in a couple of things from the comprehensive plan. So that we're being current, um and put together a little. My best effort at looking at um. The priority matrix, so looking at things that are, that are gonna take a little bit more effort, but are gonna give us a good bang for our buck. And then other items that are gonna take a lot of work and are not a super high priorities, we might wanna do those later. Ones that are pretty easy to do and also important and impactful, as well as not as important or impactful. Um but we can kind of pick and choose and do these, do some of the harder ones with some of the easier ones that would make some progress. And um we can get some things done, so I took a stab at. Um creating a little schedule that would go till the end of the year on a couple of items, so I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Um it was in the packet, but there were a lot to look at in the packet, so we want to really take a look at it again. And we can talk about the priorities and we can move those things around, um as ever, however you see um the importance of those. And then we can work, finish working on our timeline, but I would like us to kind of have this timeline and maybe try to stick with it a little bit. Um more intentionally so that we can get some things done. So that's really all I have to offer on that tonight.
So I'll just uh kind of follow that up with, if there's anything that anybody strongly wants to get off their chest or, or mention regarding that. Or the priority list. Um tonight, or if the, the bind was waiting for the next session. No, it's late, so I'm, I'm trying to, not, not trying to, yeah, yeah, and we're not trying to prolong this. Since we had a pretty full plate, so. So I think everyone's pretty well zoned. Been a long day. So I guess what we'll do is, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll revisit that, Jill. So I think we're all fine with that, um. So other matters for discussion? Done? General communication, done? Okay, adjourned?
Be a motion for the.
Motion to adjourn? Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The longest one? No, you don't have to vote, but. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.